Ring and I for both.
What I for region.
Wilson for region.
Hey, I will see you all in the executive session link, so I'm going to leave this meeting and go to the next one.
Domingos, long time, how are you?
All right, it is six o'clock, we're returning back from executive session, we are already called to order and just for the notes, I will just say to Erin that Domingos and Ayesha are here, Ayesha definitely was here before, so for the minutes, we're all set. All right, welcome everyone, we are going to start out with our CCHS student update.
Yep, just give you one minute to screen share.
Okay.
Okay, um, so, uh, the first thing is world language week, I'm sorry if you want to talk about that a little bit.
Uh, yeah, so this week is world language week and a bunch of cool little things or unique things are happening this week, uh, we have music from different cultures playing through passing periods, which is really cool. Uh, every day of the week, we have different food from different cultures, which is a good change of pace, I really like it, um, I'm not sure we're gonna have Thursday, but I know we've already had ramen. And then we have the multi multicultural food festival tomorrow, um, at five thirty. I wish I could go, but I think it's gonna be really fun, I know a lot of people who are doing and contributing to it, so I think that's the cool thing.
Yeah, I saw a list of the countries a few days ago and it's like quite an expansive list, I'm really excited, the last one, um, was back when I was in seventh grade, so it's definitely been a long time, I think that's something that people are looking forward to. Um, I'm not sure if Felicity is here.
Oh, I'm here, sorry, I was a little bit late, I was like helping my mom cook something for the fest tomorrow, so.
We're really hoping there's not a snow day tomorrow, Dr. Hunter, I guess we can say that.
Yeah, okay, I can talk a little bit about like sophomore seminars, so we've been starting like, uh, Zaria and I have been starting meeting with like guidance counselors um, to start doing like career search and like thinking about life after high school, so that's pretty exciting.
Um, yeah, definitely.
Um, we know that this week is a new snow homework weekend and I'm pretty sure everyone is excited for that, you know? Oh, and also there's a lot of early release days like today and tomorrow that are happening this week, so we're all excited for that.
Yeah, um, so not a couple of upcoming things, on Monday, spring sports start officially, it's hard to believe with the weather outside right now, but everyone's looking forward to that getting started, lots of exciting things happening at the high school. Um, Student Senate is also planning a bunch of activities coming up for the spring, we have the typical stuff, so like the cornhole tournament, the thrift store blood drive, and then we're also looking at running some court, some sort of spring spirit assembly, kind of like we did in the fall right before Thanksgiving. Um, and MVP Club or Mentors of Violence Prevention ran a successful eighth grade training this past week, and that was the first one we've ha- we've had since, um, before COVID and the capacity that it really was meant to be in, so that's very exciting too.
Yeah, and this Thursday night is also the March Choral Concert, and actually, our dress rehearsal was supposed to be right now, but it got postponed to Thursday, so, um, yeah, that's gonna be exciting too.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, there's a full like fifteen minute medley of Phantom of the Opera, just fifteen minutes of songs from Phantom of the Opera, so you should come watch that.
And that's on Thursday?
Yeah, Thursday at seven, I think.
That's awesome, you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
I know, and have there been auditions yet, Felicity? Auditions are done, right?
Oh, auditions for the play, yeah, the play, um, ever, like rehearsals are already starting and that's really exciting, unfortunately, I'm not acting in this one, just because I wasn't able to fit rehearsals into my schedule, but I'm still like doing publicity and accessibility stuff, so I'm still involved and that's, that's in still like two months, but in theater, two months is very short.
Definitely, definitely, Harry, is dodgeball tomorrow?
Uh, dodgeball tournament is tomorrow, yes.
Okay, so that's, is that student government, uh, class government?
That's class government, not senate, but yeah, right up to school, so should be exciting, fun time.
Okay, great, well, high school seems really busy, seems like we're definitely back to normal there, which feels really good.
Yeah, for sure.
Looking forward to spring though, today does not feel like spring, but hopefully next week it will feel like spring. Magically, spring sports will happen, track will happen outside and everything else, so, so thank you guys, and, um, we have a meeting, just so you know, um, our last meeting, well, I think it was the last meeting you're supposed to be at, our Boston meeting got postponed until April eleventh, so you can feel free to come or come on Zoom or if you can't come, that's okay too.
Oh, makes sense.
Alright, great, anyone else for our high school reps?
Well, I don't have questions, but I wanted to say how much we appreciate you're bringing us up to date and keeping us current, um, life from, life from inside the high school, thank you.
Definitely, and it's like seamless now, I feel like you guys have it all down and you know, the end of the year, it's like you're all together, and are you continuing with us next year? Do you think, or will you have some turnover?
Um, yeah, I think that I'm definitely planning on continuing, I don't know about Felicity and Zaria, but.
Yeah, no pressure, but we love having you.
We like you guys.
And maybe we'll bake cookies still, I'm still looking to do that with Felicity and Zaria, because I want to taste your cookies, but thank you so much, and, um, we'll see you next time. Alright. Uh, next up, we have public comment, and just as a reminder, uh, public comment is going to be a period of twenty minutes, you will have three minutes to make public comment. Um, this is a meeting in the public, but not with the public, so the school committee will not be responding, so if you have a public comment, please use the raise hand feature, and I see that Dean, you have public comments, so please state your name and address.
Dean Banfield, seventy-three Walden Terrace, uh, before I make my comment, I would just, um, make a request, uh, you can decline it, but, uh, my comment is relative to something that relates to CPS and is specifically about the Alcott Consultant Study, and it would be helpful to see the presentation before making the comment, but I'm happy to make it if that's the, if that's the rule, I'll stick with the rule.
Uh, we always have public comment at the beginning of the meeting, did you, did you have an opportunity to look at the presentation?
Yes, I did, so I have a comment, but I was trying to see if we could see the presentation before, you know, just in the event that I misinterpreted it or whatever, it would be helpful to move that comment to, you know, after that, but you know, I understand the process of your meeting, I'm just trying to to do some, and it also, we're also spending the time of the, of the people from Carlisle on something that's really Concord only, so it's fine, I'll make my comment.
Great, thank you.
Okay, fine, um, the, the takeaway that I had in looking at the, at the report and the presentation that I anticipate uh, is really that what we're faced with is, and I'll, I'll preface that with what Don Cupka said at the finance committee hearing the other night, we're not in any kind of stressed position to replace these boilers, uh, the boilers that are there should be able to last for another ten years, um, and so, given that, I think we do have a moment to, you know, just take a breath and evaluate what we're getting back. Uh, we don't have to run in and, you know, implement the, the, anything that comes out of that report right away, but my ta- my takeaway is that the energy consumption of the building is dramatically different than any of the other buildings that we've looked at, the uh, the high school has an energy use index of about fifty-five, the, uh, the new middle school that we're going to build has an energy use index of about twenty-five, uh, and the school per the report has an energy use index of a hundred and twenty-two. So it is almost five times as energy consumptive per square foot than the new middle school that we're going to build, so I think it would be well worth our time to step back and look at some conservation measures in the building before we run in and try to, you know, swap out a boiler or do something like that, or even implement, you know, an elaborate, you know, an elaborate system, so that's my comment, and we'll leave it there, thanks.
Thank you. Um, any other comments from the public? Okay, I don't see any, um, but just before we close that up, I just want to say in reference to our public comment at our DEIB meeting on March eighth, as we've done in prior meetings, I just want to correct the record in regards to Mr. Nimitz's salary. Um, he is a full-time employee of Concord and Concord Public Schools. He, his salary is paid point six by Concord Public Schools and point four by the Concord-Carla Regional School District. The split is common practice amongst our central office employees and anyone that has responsibility between both districts. He certainly is not paid as just a point six, he is a full-time employee, so I just wanted to clarify that for the public. Alright, and moving on to recognitions, I will turn it over to Kristin Anderson, who I think has brought the Strategic Planning Committee to us.
Well, two wonderful volunteers, I think they might be called Volantolds, um, but we wanted to recognize the forty-nine members of the Strategic Planning Committee that, um, have been working diligently over these last few months to make us a new strategic plan that would last from twenty-twenty-three, starting next fall to twenty-twenty-eight, so forty-nine, um, member committee made up of students, teachers, school administrators, school committee members, community members, and parents, and to represent the work today, um, we have two parents, Hillary and Erin, and I think you have a little bit to share with us.
We will do our best, um, hi Kristin, uh, Superintendent and everybody on the school committee, uh, I know a number of your faces, because a number of you have been working with us together on the Strategic Planning Committee, um, and for those of you who aren't aware, uh, the Strategic, Strategic Planning Committee has been meeting, um, three times so far this year, and we're meeting a fourth time coming up next week. These have been big, very intensive meetings, um, organized and led, um, by Kristin, um, with a lot of great hands-on work by all of those volunteers, um, as Kristin I think alluded to, everyone there is representing different parts of the school, greater school community, uh, so we have students, um, Harry, who is still on, I think, is there with us, um, and a number of other students from both the high school and the middle school, um, teachers, staff members, um, I'm probably not covering all the bases of who all of those people are, uh, community members, and then parents also from all of the different schools, Erin and I happen to be two parents, um, from the elementary school communities, um, I have two kids at Alcott, and we have been getting together in very long two-hour, three-hour actually meetings to really deep dive into the existing strategic plan and what we want it to look like, uh, for the next five years to really help shape the overall view of the system and what our priorities are. Um, bringing in all of those different voices to try to weigh in on that, um, we really tried to take the product that we had already in place and revise it rather than reinventing the wheel, um, and Kristin had some processes in place to help us, um, get through that in an effective way, um, which I think we've done. Um, so basically, we met for the first time, um, in early October, and we started by really getting into groups and brainstorming, um, what we wanted the district to look like if we were standing in twenty-twenty-eight and talking about what had happened over the past five years that the strategic plan is going to be covering, what did we want the school system to look like, and we used that process to then guide us in creating, um, our new, um, strategic objectives, if you look at the strategic plan, which I think everybody has a copy of, um, whether the old one or the draft one, basically is made up of some strategic objectives at the top and then detailed initiatives within those objectives, if you look at those as sort of categories, so our first step was to try to make sure that we have the right objectives, big picture ideas in place. We then went, um, after that meeting in each of our sort of constituent groups to talk to our people, if you will, about what, um, what their, what was important to them, what they wanted to see in the strategic plan, and people had, um, some different ways of doing that, some people were able to sort of replicate what we had just done in the Strategic Planning Committee, um, and have group discussions, um, to develop those ideas. For Alcott, um, because we have a lot of Boston families as well, we did a survey that was able to pull in some information, sort of similar to the survey that then went out later in the year to the wider school community. Everybody came back in early December, presented what they had learned from their groups, used that to fuel our discussion of actual initiatives and what we wanted those finer points to be in the plan, um, worked really hard on that, the survey went out in January, I think I'm correct, Kristin, to the wider school community, um, to get even more input, try to really make sure we're hearing as many voices as possible, when the committee met again in early February, we reviewed all of that data, which was amazingly compiled by Kristin and her team, and we basically took all of that information and tried to feed that into the initiatives that we had been drafting, make sure that if there were points that we had missed, that we were incorporating those, um, make sure that what we had been working on was matching the needs and desires of the community as a whole. Um, that has left us with a draft plan that I feel like we're not in bad shape on. When we meet again, um, next week, we're going to be working on the final section of the plan, which is the um, measuring outcomes, how are we measuring this, what are we going to be looking at to say five years down the road, how have we done on this, how well have we fulfilled this plan that we've put in place? That's what we've done so far, um, Erin, if you want to dive into any of the, um, objectives or initiatives that we have in place, if you have, somebody's able to magically share that on the screen, awesome.
Yes, um, yeah, Hillary, that was amazing, um, I could, that was beautiful, um, yeah, I think you, you kind of set everything up, and if, I don't know if everyone has seen this or not, um, it is, of course, as Hillary mentioned, not the final, um, version of the strategic plan, but it is a fairly close, um, and we sort of started, um, again, as Hillary mentioned, we broke up into different groups, and it was, I think, I could speak for everyone, it was a wonderful experience just to hear from so many different parts of our community, um, you know, I have two students at, um, Willard, so, but we had high school students there and, um, you know, different administrators, and so it was, um, very, um, I think helpful for all of us to sort of hear where, you know, everyone's concerns or what everyone, um, you know, every, you know, there was a lot of consensus and there was some disagreement, but I feel like we got it to a pretty good place, um, so we essentially broke up into four different groups, um, focusing on different, um, areas, which you can see here. Um, the strategic objectives were broken into the multiple paths to success, well-being and mental health, inclusive culture, and then finally innovative environment, um, and um, we sort of met and came up with these initiatives, again, we took what was done five years ago and just sort of updated it, um, added some as well, and I don't know that I want to read everything here, um, because there's a lot, but, um, you know, we could just sort of maybe talk about some of them, um, I'll just talk, I'll just talk about the strategic objectives overall, um, the first ones, the first one is multiple paths to success, and that's just about, you know, employing teaching practices that are engaging, emphasizing innovation and offering multiple paths to student success. So with that, we sort of, um, we talked about, you know, the different ways that people learn and how can we enhance, um, how students are learning and, and you know, I think especially a lot of this that we did five years ago, there was no COVID, so a lot of what we talked about was, you know, what, what have we learned coming out of COVID, what went away during COVID that we now want to bring back, that is some things like field trips and, um, you know, interactive, interactive, um, uh, activities between grades, has it happened as much and that's starting to come back, what do we want to see more of, what do we want, you know, maybe what, what have we learned from COVID, um, about how different people learn, um, you know, we wanted to sort of get on the same page about that, so that was in here as well. Um, inclusive culture, I mean, again, in the past five years, a lot has happened in terms of our awareness of, um, being inclusive of all cultures and backgrounds, so that was, I think, something that really, um, was a focus as well, and of course, innovative environment. Five years ago, cell phones and social media, I mean, it was there, but it wasn't as big as it is now, not as much of a problem, so we talked about how to, um, how to help students, especially in middle school and high school, navigate some of that, um, because it's such a, it's such a presence in students' lives um, these days, um, so, and then anything that we talked about that didn't really fit into any category, we put in what was called the parking lot, and we went through that and, you know, really, we made sure that everything, there were many different opinions that came back from the surveys, and some didn't neatly fit into any category, but we made sure that we were addressing, um, everything, um, that came through. Um, and then we talked about how do we, you know, as we have these strategic initia- objectives, then the initiatives, what can we do to make these objectives happen, so the objectives are sort of like the big umbrella picture, like we want to, you know, we want to make sure we're including, we're inclusive of everybody, we want to make sure that everyone um, is, you know, mentally well and that we're embracing technology, and then the next part, the strategic initiatives, is we talked about how do we go about making that happen, you know, what are the different ways we can do that, whether it's, you know, making sure we're using the outside spaces, that's something from COVID that we learned, like, hey, let's make more use of the outside space that we have, especially in light of the new middle school, um, coming along, and then, um, you know, incorporating more digital learning, um, obviously iPads and, um, computers are very, laptops are prevalent now, um, in all the classrooms, how do we leverage, um, some of those programs as well, so the initiatives were, again, how do we bring the objectives to life, and then the last thing we talked or have talked about is how do we monitor, monitor this, how do we make sure that we're meeting the, um, objectives we set out in the beginning, um, and there's many, um, again, we broke that into the different categories, so like multiple paths for success, how can we measure that students are, um, learning in the best way that for them, you know, and that is the different tests, of course, um, individual assessments, meetings with teachers, and then how do we make sure that the students are, you know, mentally well, um, and there are, um, surveys that we can give them, this is a harder one, obviously, to objectively measure, um, but I think what we would utilize surveys, um, to make sure that people feel that they're being listened to and that they are, um, you know, okay, um, as we know, the mental health crisis is really, um, really, um, acute right now, and then in terms of, um, inclusive culture, we, um, talked about increasing the number of diverse faculty and staff, I know that was something that was, um, talked about five years ago, but, um, we haven't put a number to that, but, um, I think just making sure that we're, um, looking at people from um, various backgrounds as we, um, go about hiring. And then finally, for the innovative environment, um, some ways we could measure that, that we talked about, um, you know, that, that's a little bit easier to see, we'll have, we could have working outdoor spaces that are like outdoor classrooms, we can, um, create time, um, to explore and design and implement at least one additional outdoor space option at each school with a sun shelter, so really, um, making sure we're utilizing our outdoor space, obviously, all our schools are in beautiful settings and just making sure we're making use of those, um, and then making sure that outdoor spaces are accessible to all students, so again, the innovative environment, you can sort of more tangibly measure, um, but some of the other things are a little more, um, difficult to monitor, um, I, you know, when this is finalized, I know we'll be sharing, um, or Kristin will be sharing this with everybody, um, I know that was a really quick and broad overview, but, um, I don't, does anyone have questions?
Erin and Hillary, you did great, thank you so much for representing us, and thank you to every forty-nine members on the committee, you all are doing wonderfully, and I think this strategic plan will take us well into the future.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is really great, thank you for coming, and you do have a couple of school committee members here, uh, well, Court and Carrie and Domingos all sat on that committee, and I think it was Zaria and Harry, so a lot of us have seen this, which is great, so thank you for that, it was really great.
Yeah, and Sarah, Tracy and I have all been through the process from the previous strategic plan.
That's right, we did do the previous one.
So.
Sarah, do you have a question?
Yeah. I, I have a question, but not for our guests, I have a question procedurally about what's, uh, what are the next steps in terms of school committee, so in a minute, get to it, yeah. So, but thank you for this presentation.
Great. Hey, you guys did a great job, it was such a, a really, really interesting, thorough, um, very valuable experience to be part of the, the group, and you guys did a great job capturing that, so thank you. Thanks, Kristin, for running it, I thought you did an excellent job bringing all of the different pieces together, the community members and the forty-nine people was a lot, but it actually expanded so far beyond that into the entire school and Concord and Concord-Carla and Boston communities, so, um, it was really, really neat to be a part of, and I think it, and it's in a great place right now, so I look forward to seeing the final in a, after next week.
Erin and Hillary, we, we have made a deliberate point of not digging into this at the school committee level, because we figured the committee really owned this, and the school committee will have its, its turn. Uh, so we appreciate the update, because we have not done a lot of this at the school committee level, uh, again, quite intentionally, thank you.
And you will see it a little bit later on in the agenda, so you can feel free to stay if you'd like to listen to our discussion about it, but, um, you know, also feel free to do whatever you want me to. So, thank you, thank you so much.
Alright, I think. So I just have a question about what, like, where the school committee, like, where our conversations are gonna come in to just like when we're gonna talk about this and what information is going to be shared with us to inform those conversations? Uh, just because I heard, you know, there was reference to both the school climate survey and the strategic, um, plan survey, and I was wondering if we were gonna see any of that information, um, and, yeah.
Well, I think later on tonight, we're gonna have a little bit of a discussion about kind of where we're at, and Lori, do you want to chime in on that?
Yeah, sure, you know, we, whatever, you certainly have access to anything we brought to the Strategic Planning Committee, uh, Kristin has all of that, you know, thematically aggregated, the, the strategic planning survey really was, uh, qual- quantitative and deeply qualitative, so we identified both the numeric outcomes and then, um, somatic outcomes of the qualitative responses, we can certainly get that to you. Um, the other culture surveys, I think, Kristin, are those the ones that we typically do?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this year, you're doing.
Yes, and some of that other data that you'll be seeing later in the school year.
Okay, no, that, that was my other question, is did you do both surveys this year, or did the strategic ones supplant the, uh, the culture, now you continued with the?
The strategic planning survey was the culture survey.
It was, okay, so that, yeah.
Yeah, and then we have the individual results with the, yeah. The pair and the DESA and some of those that the kids do for screening purposes.
And those you'll see later on in the year.
Yep.
Not part of this process, so.
Right.
Okay, alright, great, alright, moving on to correspondence, Alexa, I'll go to you first for Concord Public.
Sure, um, we had, um, several pieces of correspondence, um, we had one email that asked about, um, our use of ARPA funds, um, we don't really get ARPA funds, and well, I guess I don't need to explain this in the public, but, um, except for a small grant that's about equity, um, we had two questions about the capital planning process, one was a request for um, access to the Alcott Boiler Study, and one was, um, a piece of correspondence critical of Article nineteen, specifically how I handled it. Um, one, providing detailed feedback of candidate Angel Charles for Director of Student Services, one email, um, asking us to substantiate and defend the benefits of um, professional development, and eighteen emails in support of the Concord Public School budget.
Okay, we did not have as many at the region, so we had three pieces of correspondence, one was, um, some recommendations, I think you all got that one about the podcast told a story, which I think Carlisle did, so that was early on. Uh, we had another piece that Alexa actually responded to regarding our new Director of Student Services, it came into both, and then the third was from a parent expressing their unhappiness with the budget process and the recent public comment period. And that was it for the region. So we will move on to our chairs liaisons and superintendents report, and, um, Alexa, you and I want to start, and then we'll go to Lori after that.
Sure, I don't think we have much to report though, Tracy.
Yeah, we don't have much, um, we have a chairs, uh, breakfast this Friday with the chairs of all of the school committees around, and I think that I was able to talk to a few of the chairs at the legislative breakfast, they really enjoyed our first one. And I think that I was able to talk to a few of the chairs at the legislative breakfast. They really enjoyed our first one. And then like the chair of AB is actually not running again. She let me know that, but I said, you know what? Come anyway. You still have a couple of weeks left or you can send someone in your place. So I think that it's just a really great opportunity to kind of network with other school committees around. So that's some really helpful sets this Friday. We did also have to move our new member onboarding meeting to next week. So you'll see an agenda for that soon. And that was kind of a, we all had, well, Alexa and I had some things happening, so we had to move that meeting. So thank you, Sarah, for your patience on that. And we just had reports from the finance committee. I can report that they are going to recommend the regional budget in the affirmative at town meeting. And then I'll turn it to Alexa.
Yeah, and I think the only other thing of note is the chairs breakfast, which is a select board event that happens generally each month was the date was postponed last month. And unfortunately, it ended up falling in the middle of our February school break. So neither Tracy nor I were able to attend. And then this week it was also postponed. I think it's next week. It was supposed to be.
Next Wednesday.
Last, yeah, anyway. So, so we've had a little bit of a break from that. So we're anxious to get back connected with that group, but there really isn't much from our perspective.
Yep. And then I will turn it to Dr. Hunter.
You, thank you. I just have a few things. I think most significant is the high school leadership. As you all know, Mike Mistrillo resigned last week. We're so grateful for all that he did while he was at the helm of CCHS. It became a really positive place for kids and staff under his leadership. He managed a lot of crises, including a school fire and all of the pandemic. And I really built connections and relationships across kids and teachers and parents. And we're just really grateful for the legacy he leaves. And in that regard, it was my pleasure to appoint Brian Miller and Katie Stahl as co-principals of CCHS permanently. And they're going to take it, make it their own, work on an entry plan, probably in the fall. We're probably just going to get through the year. Work on an entry plan, talk vision and really look at where things are really great at CC and what we can work on to go from great to outstanding. So CC is a great, stable, consistent place and well received by everyone as that announcement rolled out last week. So thanks to everyone for that. And the homeless shelter opened Monday. That's just yesterday. I think I've lived a few days already this week. Opened yesterday. We got to tour it a bit yesterday just to get a sense because today we went over and we were able to register all the families. As you probably have heard, two thirds or so are heading to their school of origin. Many are headed back to Boston Public Schools. And the others are sort of scattered. So we're working with all those other districts and getting transportation arranged. We have about ten kids enrolling in the Concord Public Schools and CCHS. So we've been able to start connecting with them. They're going to start on Thursday. So it was a really, really great day. They're so grateful for absolutely everything that's being done for them and just really nice families. A lot of different diverse backgrounds. We needed translators at a number of points during the morning. The schools were there. Kristen was there. She took point on helping to organize. Erin Higgins and Karen Merchi were there actually doing the registration piece. And then we had a couple of people from every school and really just put our arms around them and it really felt good. So more to come on that, but we're up and running, ready to, ready to welcome them. And then my last note tonight, just because I get to make the, I have the pleasure of deciding what to do in the stormy days. And the rain held out less long as I had hoped. Just a shout out to the bus drivers as they drove in some really challenging conditions this afternoon and did so safely and patiently. And we needed a little help from Concord Public Works at one point because some, they were stuck and just so thoughtful and just want to give them a public shout out for getting kids home safely. And as they do every day, but today was a bit more extraordinary. So thank you.
Great. And I guess I would just echo what Lori said about Mike Mistrillo. He will definitely be missed at the high school. We're looking forward to potentially having an opportunity for the community to kind of say their goodbyes to him. Is that still?
I don't know if that's gonna come together. Yeah, we'll have to see, but they can certainly send emails to me or Brian and Katie and we'll get them to him if they'd like.
Okay, great, great. So thank you to Mike for all of his service to this town and to the high school. I think it's, he will be missed and we look forward to the future of Brian and Katie. Their first principal coffee is happening this week on Thursday. So they are digging right in, which is great. So the high school, I have to say, you know, from a parent perspective, really hasn't missed a beat this year. Which has been great. So thank you for that. Okay. Anyone else have anything from any of their committees?
All right.
Well, we have time. Yeah, Court, go ahead.
Yeah. I'd like to take a moment and recognize Mark Pauli. Mark is a town employee with Minuteman Media. And he really did tremendous service to the schools in getting our meetings online and functioning all the way through COVID. He's leaving at the end of this week or next. And I'd like to publicly wish him well and express our thanks. He spent a lot of time at Ripley. He was there before our meeting started. He was typically there after our meetings ended. Never, never a word of complaint and always a positive and technically competent effort on our behalf. So our thanks to Mark.
Right. Right. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. And Sarah, did you have something?
I had from the, the update from the adult and continuing ed that.
Because yours was time, yours was timely, right?
Yes, exactly. So one is they have some great parent sessions coming up about your teen and money on March twenty-first, handling gender neutral pronouns with style on April sixth. And how to talk to your adolescent about healthy eating and weight. And that's on May second. They are all in the evening. They are all on Zoom. And they're all twenty-five dollars each with scholarships available. But the other thing that, so we had our, our board meeting last week. And one of the things we were talking about was next year's Can We Talk series? And what would be interesting topics? And there was a lot of interest in talking about children's or really everybody's just mental health in general, adults, youth, everything. And I said, oh, isn't that timely? Because also we are having a forum on mental health. And then Court had mentioned how in the past, there had been some sort of overlap of, of organizations and or service providers and all of that kind of stuff. So there were just very preliminary conversations about seeing maybe potentially if there's some kind of symbiotic, you know, way to do something together between the, the schools and the, and the adult and continuing ed, but all really just, I just wanted to put it out there for everybody. But there are no, no specific asks, no specific plan or anything, but just to say that that's another, that's a topic that they're looking at too.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I just had one other thing. I did send out the a tentative schedule between now and the end of the year. So just so people just have an idea for the public, we have three school committee coffees coming up. One on March twenty-first at the Fowler Library. We have a coffee and that's at ten AM. We have a coffee March twenty-fifth at ten AM in Boston at Panera. And the third one is March twenty-ninth. And that is in Carlisle at the Carlisle Library at six o'clock. And then we have a Concord evening coffee at six o'clock at the Concord Library on April fifth. And I will just also plug the speaker series at CCHS for our school committee members. If you'd like to attend that, it's at seven o'clock. It's kind of the first of its kind. And then the other thing to just note is we have a forum that will be a school committee forum and that is in April, and I can't find the date on here, but I think that we will be posting that. So just, just remind people of some dates. So we have a lot of dates coming up and so just keep track of that table that I sent around. So thank you all. All right. And now we're on to our discussion. So our twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-eight strategic planning update. And I think what we should do is start maybe with Lori and Kristen. And then if Carrie and Court and Domingos want to, you know, chime in after that, that would be great.
Great. So Kristen, I don't know if she's on right at the moment. So that's okay. I can take it from here. I think you heard a really fantastic overview from the parents who sit on the committee. So I don't want to duplicate that, Tracy. So we'll just sort of set it up and then I can turn it over to the committee. I do think you, you heard threadlines of the previous plan for the last five years. And there seemed to be agreement that we would take those core base initiatives and or objectives first and then initiatives. Look at them and, you know, see, see where we were at and what needed to be tweaked, fine tuned, honed in on, broadened, it really depended on the, on the topic. Then the strategic initiatives, as mentioned, are really the action steps. They start to define what a goal would be to achieve that. And then I'm just going to remind you that the strategic plan correlates with the school improvement plans. It correlates with the my goals. It correlates with the educator goals. So there's a lot of backdrop to all of this. That is how things actually are executed and implemented. So I think, you know, the threadlines are similar to the past with slightly different areas of emphasis. And I think that is some of the incredibly great reflective work the committee did. So that we're, you know, sort of prioritizing things in a little different focus in a different way. So without going into it, and then, you know, we are going to spend the next one really working on how we're going to measure that. Working to be as meas- measurable as possible. And you heard some of the ideas to start that conversation. And I, you know, I, I'm excited. This is one of my favorite projects and it served us well the last five years. And I can see here that this roadmap is going to serve us well for the next five. And really a product of the community, very, very collaborative and engaged efforts to make this all come together. So Tracy, I guess we'll turn over the committee and answer questions or hear comments, et cetera.
Yeah. So why don't we start with, if we could start with maybe Court, Carrie and Domingos, like if you have any other input to give us other than what we heard tonight from the two parents? And, and Kristen, I'll ask you the next meeting. Is that the last meeting?
Yep.
Yes. Okay. And what's the date of that one? Just in case anyone wants to go.
Next Wednesday, March twenty-second.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So let's turn it over to Carrie, Court and Domingos. If you have anything to add about kind of your participation in the process, how you felt it was going, anything you want to inform us about?
Carrie, you first or me?
You go for it.
So my comments will be very brief. Pleased with the process thus far. And a little bit apprehensive about next week, given the importance of metrics and the fact that we've got a pretty tight timeline. So we're going to have to really be, be, be at our best, but I think we have been so far. But this will be our shortest session and a critical one. Specifically, what I hope to be looking for in addition to what I see unfolding already very, very nicely. Number one is generally across the strategic initiatives and the measurable outcomes. Some of them are necessarily referenced right now as improve this, increase that. And that really obligates us to know what our baseline is, where are we starting from? So I'll be, I'll be seeking out baseline information on some of those that may not come, come forth next week, but at some point I think we've got to know what our claimed starting point is on some of these initiatives and that'll help guide where we want to go. And then very specifically because we're all so painfully aware of the mental health crisis that pervades this nation and impacts our schools and notably impacts our budget. I, I'm going to ask if on the wellbeing, whether we look at our, our crisis intervention capacity in addition to our more generalized proactive work? Because it appears to me that's something where the schools are a necessary backstop for mental health services. That's what I've got. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Court. Carrie.
I, I mean, I pretty much said what I, what I have to say about it. I want to, I'm really curious to hear, we still have another meeting, really curious to hear from everybody else who's just hearing about some of this for the first time.
Okay, we'll go to Domingos.
Hi, guys. I attended one of the, the strategic meetings. And what I appreciate about it was the fact that we all came together to work on different issues, but we picked up on the same patterns. And that was one of the things that made it a success was the fact that even though we split up into these different groups, we all came back with pretty much the same concerns. And we started working and focusing on how we can adjust and, and, and come up with a plan to, to address them. And I look forward to the next meeting so like that we can actually put it into a, 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 a plan that we can put out for the district itself.
That's great. I think I, I went to one of them when you were there and my, you know, just to watch the interaction of the groups in different locations. I, I felt like I was kind of spying on people because I was, you know, moving from group to group and they were really into it. And everybody had a different approach to how they were going to come together to bring all the feedback together. So I, and I have to say that was not an accident. I mean, Kristen was super organized in how she, you know, really managed the group because to manage a group of fifty people is very challenging. And having participated in the last one, you know, it, it's amazing how it does actually get done. Like you have these, you know, four long sessions. Food always helps, of course. So the dinner is all great. But really, everybody's, has a common goal is to really get the work done and really what their vision of the district should be. So, you know, I, I think the work has been great so far. What I've seen has been great. I, I feel like, you know, Court and Carrie and Domingos, you've really represented us and, and the voice of the committee on that. So I thank you for that. And I'm really just looking forward to, you know, closing it up and just moving forward. So thank you.
I will say on that note, on one of those notes, Tracy, that we had students in each of the groups. And there were a couple of times when all of the adults at the table would get like really, really excited about an idea and the students would just be really quietly sitting there. And we'd be like, what do you, what do you guys think about that? And they would be like, nope. And they would, and then it was, it was really helpful, really helpful to have that perspective of like, yeah, no, that wouldn't work. My friends would do this or I would do that. Or, you know, it just, it was really a really like wonderful balance of, of just personalities and perspectives that I think landed in a really good place. So.
That's great. Uh, anyone else? Alexa?
Sure. I just want to say the thing that stuck out to me that I was not expecting to hear that piqued my interest in the strategic plan and thing and something that I will be curious about in the next five years moving forward is the, in the innovative, in the innovation category, talking and acknowledging about, about how disruptive social media and technology, like personal use can be and how it is disrupting schools. Before the pandemic, Kristen and I sat together actually on a subcommittee over at Emerson Hospital that was comprised of, I don't know, me, Kristen, some physicians, psychiatrists, some of the school resource officers, sort of trying to talk about ways to, I don't know, help, assist, acknowledge how disruptive social media device, uh, social media use on personal devices can be. So that got, like I said, interrupted by COVID and we never, they, they never resumed that, that working group. So it's really good to see that. I'm looking forward to sort of what we develop moving forward. Again, I wasn't expecting it and I was pleased to see it. Kristen knows how I bark about it all the time.
And I guess the, the other thing I'll say is, you know, it's great when you have, you can see the mission of the district and then we have the strategic plan. You know, Lori has her goals and, you know, as, as a parent, you don't always realize that all of these things are working together and it, which really what's guiding the school committee. And all of that does work together. It helps us guide our budgets and everything else that we do. So I think it's a really valuable process. So um, I think it's a really valuable process, it's, it's one that, you know, should always be front and center on our website, so people can see what we really believe in and what our goals are. So that's been helpful, uh, you know, I really always want to make a plug for a new website, but um probably shouldn't do that, but I, but I think that, you know,
It's coming, we're working on.
Right, so it just, it, it can't get lost, and I, it won't get lost, it's, it is front and center on our website. So I, I think that's how we, it really helps us to guide, you know, everything that we do to make this district as great as it is, so.
Yeah, Tracy, maybe to underline your point, um, I would say the last strategic plan that we wrote captured from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three. And we had no idea that in the midst of those five years would be three years of a pandemic. And um, it was challenging, and I think we accomplished the goal of providing a good education for all the students during the COVID, and at the same time, incredibly remarkably, I think our staff, our parents, we worked together to achieve some of the strategic objectives and goals that we set out even as we were running school in a completely different way. Um, so, you know, kind of hats off, because as you said, Tracy, having priorities like what we are working on and, you know, there's lots of good ideas out there. We can't work on everything, so having those priorities is has been really, really helpful to the day-to-day decision-making of what we're going to spend our time on. And, you know, the last thing I would say is, I, I think Carrie said it, it's like, the proof's in the pudding. When those students get up and present our work to the group of fifty and they just shine, it's phenomenal and I, I could not be more proud, so, you know, I just, the future is in a good place.
Right, anyone else? Sarah?
So I, I've, I, I, this is, this is a lot of great work. I have a question about, I only, unfortunately, every single one of the strategic meetings so far has not worked with my schedule. So I haven't been able to see the group in action, which is so upsetting, because I know that it's a really energizing and exciting thing to be a part of. But I did get to participate in the um, one of the Carlisle, well, one and a half of the Carlisle forums um on it. And I was in a breakout room with this one gentleman who said something that really resonated with me. And I think I mentioned it to the group before about when we're talking about multiple paths to success and stuff, like it, it sounds great. But what does that mean in reality? Like, how do we see it in action? And so looking over the uh, the draft plan, I had a couple of questions about that. Um, in terms of like where it says stuff about like my learning experiences vary from one another, but there's no mention of like my, I don't, at least I, maybe I missed it, like my learning experiences are unique to me, kind of thing. Um, and there was another part about um um, uh, well, a- at the end about like using things like APs and SATs to monitor development on that. When I think of APs and SATs as the more traditional route to success, right? And those scores are great, but they're also a self-selected group of students. And we've seen some really fantastic presentations this year about electives and um, about the engineering program and, you know, the lifeguard and, and things like that, that I'm just wondering to what extent does tracking elective participation, like where, where electives and stuff fall um in that kind of view of, I mean, because I saw that there's something about like using a student-centered um, approach to expanding learning opportunities, right? But I just wanted to know how that was going to be, I guess, sort of back to Court's question about like, what's the baseline? And, and how do you measure growth and how do you track where you want to go with that? So that's my question.
Yeah, certainly, certainly those courses are part of this, this is such a preliminary list of measurement tools that hasn't been developed or inclusively spoken about yet. Um, for example, we're bringing Junior Rotsey this year. And we definitely want to name that as a, a next step in this multiple paths to success. We've got fifteen kids signed up, we're certainly going to want to look at those numbers and the success rates there and the longevity of kids staying in there, so you're completely right, Sarah, this just isn't complete yet.
Okay, yeah, because we have like the global uh certificate, I mean, we've seen so many exciting things that the kids are doing um that, that I don't feel is reflected here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all.
Okay, anyone else?
So I'll go, um, I want to thank everybody, I, I just got to attend one session at the beginning and um the energy level was already very high, so I, I'm sure it just got higher and higher, so I appreciate all the hard work. I would like to see though, uh, if you can distribute the survey to the school committee, maybe post it. The survey that was done for the plan. Right?
Captain, happy to. Okay. I presented it to the strategic planning group, so I'm happy to share that with you.
Yeah, great, that'd be great, thank you.
I have one other question, and it's about the food service, are, are we going to be seeing food services at a future meeting? We were supposed to see.
Yes, we made a conscious decision because Jess was going to bring food. And we need food at a school committee meeting, so we really wanted the full, the full show, right? I mean, it's a really
I think you watching her eat would be exactly the same idea, so it's just coming in two weeks.
Now, because I saw the one about create food options that are sustainable, multicultural and all that stuff. And I just wanted, yeah, driving my kids home from school this afternoon, they were sad that they wouldn't be at school for lunch because apparently there have just been amazing offerings like tofu ramen and chickpea Caesar salads, um, so, I just, yeah.
Well, and this was, this was coordinated to be this week because, you know, she has all these options this week that are different. And so we were going to experience all of that, so we thought we would bring the experience to you later.
Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? No, okay. All right, well, thank you to Kristin and her team, and I know Lori spent all of those and all of the school committee members, parents, uh, kids, everybody's been on that, so I, and the faculty's been part of it. So it's been really, really great to watch and I, and I know how important it was, you know, five years ago. So this will just really lead us into the next five years. All right, okay, so on to, we have a few action items tonight. Uh, we have a, a bunch of votes that we will have to do all of them through roll call vote. So if you are member of the public, you may not enjoy all the voting, but it will all be done through roll call vote. So up first, we have a vote to approve uh the exchange student for the school year twenty-three, twenty-four.
I'll be happy to move that if you want.
Yep, that'd be great, Court, thank you.
Uh, I move that the Concord Carlisle School Committee vote to approve one Pan American Foundation exchange student from Germany for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year at CCHS.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Carrie's going to second, any discussion or anything to add, Dr. Hunter, feel free.
No, we're just excited to welcome another exchange student. They often find us and that's what happened here, so we're looking forward to, to including them in the phone.
Right, okay.
Is this the first time we've worked with Pan American? I didn't recognize it.
I think it is, if it, if we did, it's been a long time, but yes, in, in my time, it's not one we've worked with before.
So we're de facto approving it as one of the agencies we recognize.
Uh, yes, correct.
Okay, and uh, can we assume the student has a host family lined up?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and we will roll call vote.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Morano, I.
Randy, I.
Rankin, I.
Whit, I.
For region.
Wilson for region.
Okay, next up, we have a vote to accept a grant from the Navidia Foundation. And uh, Dr. Hunter, do you want to give any background on that?
Just briefly, uh, this is a grant that the Lighthouse uh faculty applied for and received to support that program, which supports uh students with mental health needs.
Great. Does anyone have that in front of them?
I move that the Concord School Committee vote to accept a grant in the amount of five thousand dollars from the Navidia Foundation in support of the Lighthouse Program at CCHS.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I hope you could convey our thanks to the proponents and the, the applicants for us. Um, this is the advanced tech company, am I right, the AI folks?
I believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and we will, uh, any further discussion? No, thank you for, the teachers of Lighthouse for applying for this grant, because I think that's always great when we get a grant unexpectedly, so. Um, okay, roll call.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Morano, I.
Randy, I.
Rankin, I.
Whit, I, for region.
Wilson for region. Thanks.
Okay, and next up, we have a vote to approve staff enrollment request.
So this is a uh, high school teacher looking to bring their two middle school students.
I move that the Concord and Concord Carlisle School Committees want to approve the following staff request to enroll her children in the Concord Public Schools, Concord original school district for the twenty-twenty-three, for twenty-twenty-four school year and the tuition be waived, specifically a CCHS teacher, uh, two children to enroll in the sixth and eighth grade at CMS.
Second. Right, any discussion?
I would note, this is a contractual provision, this is a pro forma vote on our part.
Okay, roll call.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I for both.
Morano, I for both.
Randy, I for both.
Rankin, I for both.
Whit, I for region.
Wilson for region.
Alrighty, we are just moving right along and, oh, the next one's an exciting one, a vote to approve the Director of Student Services, Angel Charles.
Anybody want to bump me? Yeah, go ahead, Carrie.
I move that the Concord and Concord Carlisle School Committees vote to approve Angel Charles as the Director of Student Services.
Second. All right, and any discussion?
I think she, uh, she has a, a big job to do and uh thus far, she's proven herself more than capable. And uh, I think we expect uh more, more of the same.
All right, I would agree with that, Court, a hundred percent, so congratulations to Angel Charles in this new role. And the Thoreau Principal Search will be happening shortly, just for anyone at Thoreau that's listening. Okay, so roll call vote, please.
Anderson, I for both.
Booth, I for both committees.
Morano, I for both.
Randy, I for both.
Rankin, I for both.
Whit, I for region.
Wilson for region.
All right, and the last up, um, I'm just going to frame this one a little bit, this is what we did in Concord Public last week. And it's a vote to approve the school committee resolution, resolution supporting the increase in the special education um circuit breaker funding. So you had that in front of you, but I do believe we have to make the same change that we had in the CPS one and just change the language to up to fourteen percent. So when we do take a vote on that, I would note that, and then the other thing that I would like to do is add all of our names to it. So I feel like it's a little bit stronger when you have everyone's name. And I would ask Domingos if you would like your name on this also?
Yes, please.
Perfect, all right, so, because we, because you weren't here with us last week, which is why I just asked you about that. And I, you should, I think that she is not with us right now. No, but she had included her name on the CPS one, so we will, we will make those additions before we send it. And then, once we wrap this up, Alexa and I will send, she'll send the CPS one and I will send the region one. And then we will send you the finalized completed copy. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Tracy, could we have somebody pull it up on the screen just for anybody new to this conversation?
Sure, maybe the magic of Erin Higgins could pull that up on the screen.
I, I, I'm not prepared to do it, I'm sorry.
I know, I, I'm not either, I have a lot of windows open.
I mean, I think we all know what we're getting in for, but
Yes.
Given the fact that it's a vote and an advocacy vote, thank you.
Yep, and this is really, um, it's advocating with our representatives and our state senator um for you know, really some help with this fourteen percent increase from our out-of-district um schools. And Erin, you can scroll down a little bit, too.
And I think our hope is this will help districts that are even in more dire straits than we could ever be.
And I think it'll also greatly help us.
So here's where the change is, uh, where, whereas the uh OCD has increased the tuition by, approved tuition increases of up to fourteen percent.
Yeah.
I think that was our language.
Yeah, approved of up to fourteen percent.
Thank you.
So we'll make that change and we'll add all of our names to it. So when
To suggest they're going to come in much lower than fourteen, but we can be hopeful.
And I did take a little look on that, on their website, and um, you know, out-of-district tuitions can really range from fifty thousand dollars a year to four hundred thousand dollars a year, I mean, there's a big range, so fourteen percent really has significant impact. And typically, just for anyone that's out there listening, typically, it's a, Lori, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's typically like a two percent increase.
Two to three is typical.
Two to three, so to go to fourteen in the course of a year is really significant to all of us. Okay, so I would ask, um, if someone can make that motion with the amendments in it.
Move to uh, I move that the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee uh, uh, endorse this uh, uh, recommendation and send it to our representatives as amended tonight. Is that adequate, Tracy?
That's adequate, yep, perfect, do we have a second?
Second.
And any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Morano, I.
Randy, I.
Rankin, I.
Whit, I for region.
Sarah, you're muted, just muted.
Wilson, I.
Okay, and with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee. Because I think we have to do this roll call also.
So moved.
Again, thank you, any discussion, are you guys ready to go? Only Sarah and Sharon, really. Hey, uh, roll call, please.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Morano, I.
Randy, I.
Rankin, I.
Whit, I for region.
Wilson, I. Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you, Sharon.
All right, um, so we are finally going to be able to see the results of the Alcott um feasibility study with respect um to the boiler project that we had on our capital plan last year. Um, sort of at the end of our process, we decided to table it um and explore some alternatives uh to the high-efficiency boiler that had been um the result of another feasibility study, so I don't remember the exact year that that initial feasibility study was created, I think it was initially in two thousand eighteen. What came from that um environmentally focused feasibility study was a recommendation to upgrade the Alcott boilers. Um, we were uh in the final stages of executing that recommendation. Um, and then we decided to revisit another feasibility study. Um, so with that, I, um, and, and again, and so we'll be seeing that um today. Before I turn it over to Dr. Hunter, um, Charlie, we don't take comment from the um from the public in the middle of our meetings, so um I apologize for that, so I'm not going to be
I, I just had a, I just had a point of order.
I don't know that you can make one.
No?
As not a sitting member, I don't know, any parliamentarians among us?
Well, he can
A member of the public make a point of order?
I believe he can claim that we are out of order in some way, am I correct?
I actually don't know.
I just wanted to get a clarification on process in terms of when we, we get to comment on the presentation material.
Public comment occurs at the beginning of our meeting, which has passed, and then you'd have the opportunity at the next meeting to make comment. All right, so I will turn that over to Dr. Hunter and Mr. Conry to introduce and tee up the results of this feasibility study.
Yeah, I think I'm gonna turn over to Bob and let him queue us up.
Great.
Great, so we do an RFQ process and selected Weston and Sampson as the engineering firm to do the feasibility study. I'm gonna introduce the, the two principals involved in the meeting the process for Weston and Sampson. The first is Scott Henricks. He's kind of the project lead on this, and worked, working with him is Sam Alpert, who I believe will be running the presentation tonight, is that correct, Sam? You can unmute yourself.
Got it. Is it okay if I share my screen?
So, Aaron, Sam can share the screen and present, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna, without further ado, pass it on to Sam to kind of walk us through the presentation and what their process was, and what their, what their findings were for different options that might work for Alcott School.
Thank you so much, Bob, can you guys see my screen okay?
Yes.
So, yeah, so really thank, thank Bob, Ian, and the team at the Alcott School for, you know, helping introduce us to this project. Really, the intent of the zero emissions feasibility study was to try to look at various options on how to upgrade the heating systems at the school.
Sam, you've got a dialyze box in front of your screen.
And you need to go to presentation mode?
Sure, yes, sorry about that.
Oh, it happens.
How's this better? All right, sorry about that. So first, the agenda, we're gonna go through the scope of the project, talk about some of the goals, get into the options that we reviewed, look at the results, and get into some of the recommendations, and get into Q and A at the end. So the scope entailed required a site visit, looking at the existing conditions of the facility. We looked at the heating systems, look at the existing ventilation cooling systems, looked at the building envelope, looked at the electrical components of the systems. We did a utility bill documentation review, so what that entails is basically looking at your current Concord Municipal Light Plant, electric bills, historical bills. We looked at not only, you know, the current 12 months, but also prior to COVID, so we can kind of understand, you know, the history behind, you know, what you've been using for energy, electricity and natural gas, which is from the national grid. Then we did an energy analysis, we did an energy model of the various systems, so looking into the various options, calculating the savings and energy impacts associated with each of these options. The HVAC system analysis was individually looking, having our mechanical engineering team looking at the HVAC systems, the mechanical ventilation and air conditioning, and, and basically, you know, figuring out what could work best for you guys. The cost estimation is basically just that, looking at the actual potential costs of these projects to incorporate into your buildings, as well as look at the impacts of the energy usage over the years, and we put together a report to document this. So, just back to the project goals, there's two icons here, right, there's your building, your school, and you know, the cloud is basically the amount of emissions coming out, so really, the intent is to reduce the amount of emissions. Environmental emissions, greenhouse gas emissions associated with this building. So the Alcott Elementary School currently has natural gas heating systems, they were installed with the school when it was put in place, and the idea is to look for alternate options for zero and near-zero emissions in conjunction or in comparison to the, the natural gas boiler upgrade that was considered previously. So the existing conditions of the school, top left is basically the front view of the school, the front entrance, the brick exterior. The bottom left-hand side is the existing boiler and the associated controls. So that's the natural gas boiler system, the top right is the existing rooftop units, which provide ventilation and cooling to the space, and then the bottom right is the existing water heaters, which are natural gas storage tanks that serve the space. So the options that we considered, one which you've looked at in the past was the gas-fired high-efficiency boilers upgrade, that's just basically looking at replacing one-for-one your boilers with something more efficient. Two, we've looked at a variable refrigerant flow or VRF with, and we'll get into a lot of acronyms here, but DOAS, which stands for Dedicated Outside Air System. So this, this second option is 100% electric option, it's basically an air-source heat pump option. So that option basically is a different type of heating that could go into the space, but that would enable you to go all-electric. Three, the other, the other electric option we looked at was a hybrid approach, and so that's an air-to-water heat pump system in conjunction with replacement boilers, smaller boilers to supplement the air-to-water heat pump. And the reason why this option would require supplemental boilers is to get down to the really low temperatures and the, and the capacity of the systems. Basically, so that, we'll get into a little bit further, but so that you wouldn't have to do some costly electric upgrades. Or the other option that we looked at, which was of interest, is upgrading the boilers to a different fuel type, which is biomass boilers, so that's wood chip, wood pellet, those are the type of boilers that we considered there. And all three options, two through four, they all included an electric heat pump domestic hot water upgrade, so basically, these building, the three options that we considered would lower the carbon emissions a lot of the building, and the only thing left that potentially could use fossil fuels would be the, the actual cooking stoves in the kitchen. So, so the first option, to get into a little bit more detail, just the high-efficiency boiler upgrade, like we said, this is a direct replacement, high-efficiency gas systems, it's approximately 10% more efficient than the system that you have now. It's considered a base case, and we're just showing it for comparison purposes. So the VRF, or the variable refrigerant flow system, that is your electric air-to-air heat pump system. There's a larger unit that you can see on the left that gets attached to either diffusers or some sort of basically distribution to distribute the air into the space. These types of systems are very efficient, they, they have the ability to match the refrigerant flow to the heating and cooling loads on demand. And there's individual space temperature control, so you may be able to have cooling in one space and heating in another, or a higher temperature in one space and a lower temperature in another, depending on the requirements of the space, who's in it, and, and the outdoor, the sunlight coming into the space, basically. So it also allows you to do heat recovery during the swing seasons, what that means is basically the refrigerant has the ability to come back to the central system and enable a little bit of heat recovery when it comes to the usage of the energy. So this system does require electric system improvements, particularly when it comes to the electric panel, and we had an electrical engineer look at your existing systems to see what kind of upgrades would be required there. So the dedicated outdoor air system associated with the VRF provided, provides ventilation. It can efficiently recover the exhaust heat, and also has a built-in economizer. So the next option, the air-to-water heat pump on boilers hybrid, that basically, the benefits of that system primarily are because you can reuse the existing hydronic or hot water loop that currently distributes your heating throughout the facility. So instead of replacing your boilers with a higher-efficiency boiler, you're replacing them with a system that is, it consumes electricity, however, it creates the heat via an air source, so it basically extracts the heat from the air and puts that heat into, into your existing hydronic loop, so it doesn't require big upgrades when it comes to the way you're distributing the heat into the space. This type of heat pump is a two-stage heat pump, and it can produce up to 170 degrees hot water, so very similar to your current scenario. Its size to allow what we call the maximum electrification, so basically, what we tried to do was look at your existing service panels on the electric side, and to see what, what practically could work without doing some costly electric upgrades to those panels and some associated other equipment. It also would, through this hybrid approach, you would, it would require new high-efficiency gas boilers, but they're much smaller size than what, what you would need to run the entire plant, and entire facility, and then the last option, the biomass boiler. We recommended three new wood pellet-fired boilers, this would also enable you to reuse the existing hydronic or hot water loop system. It does displace all fossil fuel except for the gas-fired cooking, like I mentioned before, and some of the intricacies with the biomass boiler are that it requires a physical silo to store the wood, or to store the fuel. So that typically is outdoors and would require some sort of maintenance. So the numerical results that we found from doing our energy analysis, so you can look on the left, the 1, 2, 3, 4 options, so the existing, we compared the energy usage, and we can, can, we calculated everything in terms of BTUs, so we basically converted your electricity and natural gas usage into one metric, which is BTUs that's used on-site, so kilobtuas per square foot per year, that's a, that's a very typical energy term that you hear, but basically, the energy usage index, basically, you can compare that number either to different scenarios or to different types of buildings, or different buildings. And in this case, we looked at the first option, which is the high-efficiency boiler upgrade, so that lowers your energy usage index by about 11%. The second scenario, the VRF, that lowers your energy usage index by about 60%. Your air-to-water heat pump boiler hybrid approach, which has a little bit of less savings, so it's in the middle because it's a hybrid, and then the biomass boiler, which also has some savings, but not as much as some of the other electric options when it comes to BTU savings. So then, the more detailed results, so we looked not only at the energy usage, but we looked at the individual impacts on the different, different types of fuels, so natural gas, obviously, you're saving natural gas for each of these different scenarios, as well as you are consuming a little bit more electricity for each of the different scenarios, with the highest being, you know, when you electrify the building more. The fourth scenario, which is the biomass system, that also would use some biomass, you would have to pay for that. So when it comes to the carbon emissions, the, there are a few different results, so 16% results on the carbon emissions for the gas boilers, 98% for both the VRF and the biomass, because those dramatically reduce your emissions, and then the hybrid approach lowers your emissions by about 60%. So then, in terms of cost saves, savings, the gas boilers and the VRF have a little bit of a cost savings. The hybrid approach pretty much keeps your costs relatively the same, and your biomass increases your costs a little bit based on the estimated dollars per tonne that we estimated, that you would have to procure the wood. So then, the next column is the capital project cost, so these are professional cost estimates using actual numbers. So the, the gas-fired upgrade was basically just an increase from the proposals from last year due to the timing difference, and then the rest of these, we, we work with a professional cost estimator to get some of the detailed costs. Then, we looked at the estimated incentives from the utilities, so national grid and CNLP may be able to provide energy efficiency incentives for upgrading to various options, so we have estimated incentives listed here, which are due to be confirmed over the next few months with national grid and CNLP. And then the ROIs are pretty flat for most, for the most part. Any questions?
Sam, can you go back to biomass and tell us why that doesn't seem to have a carbon impact? I thought if we burned wood, we were in fact introducing carbon.
So, this is Scott. What is it, what is a source of captured carbon, so it's essentially a neutral fuel, other than the cost of harvesting it and processing it? So whatever, whatever carbon you're burning and putting into the environment is, is gonna go back into the environment, you had grown in another tree.
All right, I, I, I see, so.
Whereas the other fuels typically, I'm sorry, excuse me, the other fuels would typically come from a natural gas source or some other fossil fuel that's being extracted from the ground and is not bioavailable at the moment, but would be after the fact.
Yeah, that was the word I was waiting for, the extraction, okay, I got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask a quick question? With respect to option two and the capital proj- project cost of $4 million, are the electrical upgrades required to run that system a part of that capital project cost, are they in that number?
Yes, we've looked at the, the customer-owned or the, you know, the school-owned equipment, basically anything inside the building. So everything from the panels, because anything outside of that would be owned by the utility.
So the existing wiring and, and electric service that you have right now is not capable of supporting 100% electric building? So there's like a million and a half dollars in that number to upgrade that.
Okay, in that 4-2?
Approximately.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wait, can you repeat that, I'm sorry?
Sure, the existing electric service that you have, the panels, the wiring, the wiring from the street into your building, et cetera, the transformer, none of that is capable of supporting a 100% electrified building.
Great.
So you end up having to replace your main electric equipment for the building with much larger equipment? equipment for the building with much larger equipment.
And that in that cost is not, it is or is not included in the capital project.
It's absolutely included. Yeah.
It's included in there. Okay.
That's one of the reasons the cost for that particular system is so high.
Can we revisit something you said earlier, if I had it correct? And that is that we've got about a decade with the alternating two boilers there now, the cast iron ones, all things being equal. Is that accurate?
I'm not sure. Are you asking whether the boilers are gonna die soon or they got ten years left in them?
Yes.
I don't know the answer to that question. We were under the assumption that the boilers were being replaced and that was the base case. We didn't really really spend any time investigating the existing conditions of those boilers.
All right, good to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for these guys while we've got them on?
If we were to look at other comparable facilities, are you working with any? And does that give you any insights you can share with us as to solutions that you're you're witnessing right now with your clients or or other other customers that are comparable?
Sure. We actually just finished complete construction documents for the town of Winchester in their town hall. They ended up electing to go with a completely air to water heat pump system. We end with that particular case, we ended up replacing a lot of the internal equipment. Because we did not go with a two stage heat pump. We went with a traditional, well, hard to say traditional, but a normal air water heat pump, which is only good for about a hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty degrees. So the existing internal equipment was not capable of providing heat under those circumstances. To give you a ballpark idea of where the pricing came in, this has not gone out to bid yet, but the estimator's pricing was about four point three million for an all gas system in this particular case and about six million for the all electric heat pump system. We've also done some studies with some other school systems. You know, the all the electrification is can be expensive and and we're finding that if you if you take the approach of looking at where's kind of the balance point, you know, let's get most of this done for a reasonable amount of cost that we can get. In this particular case, we think we're getting about seventy percent of the carbon emissions that we would have gotten, reduction of emissions that we would have gotten with the all electric version. And and with that, you know, for it's probably end up being more like about a seven hundred plus thousand dollar job, but regardless, substantially less expensive than a four million dollar job. And if you did go for instance, with an all, you know, if we got rid of the boilers and went to an all air to water heat pump system, you're probably looking at close to four million dollars or something like that as well. For a lot of the same reasons. But we are seeing this a lot in New England, in municipalities, various whether it's schools, town halls, libraries. Substantial amount of the building stock in New England is hydronically heated. And if you can reuse what you have and supplement it with an electrified system, a high efficiency electrified system, it makes the economics much more palatable.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Scott, I just give you a question that we had raised to you. Can you just comment on option three? On its ability to be scalable if we wanted to go hundred percent electric later, is that a possibility with option three?
Sure. So what you're looking at is a system that's basically going to have an outdoor air water to water heat pump that'll sit outside, that'll be piped into your existing hydronic loop along with two more gas fired boilers. If in the future you wanted to fully electrify this building, you would have to do the electrical upgrades that we have talked about. But you could you could decommission or put your gas boilers on standby, add a couple more air to water heat pumps and fully electrify the building without too much difficulty, other than obviously the cost of changing out your electric system.
Thank you.
So just just think of the air to water heat pump as an electric boiler that's more efficient than you know, it's more efficient because it's a heat pump.
I want to thank you all for this work. It's a nice presentation. My question is, is it correct that the gas boiler and option three, that the gas boiler portion of the system is there to supplement on very cold days? Or am I misunderstanding?
No, that's correct. What's gonna end up happening is the system's gonna run pretty well. And it's gonna get really cold out and it's not gonna have the capability of the air to water heat pump will not have the capability to maintain the hot water temperature that's gonna be required to heat your building. So let's say that number is one seventy and it's gonna start going on a one sixty five, one sixty. And at some point in time, the system's gonna say, hey, listen, we're not heating the building. We need to kick on a boiler and and trim the temperature back up to where we need it to be. And that's how I foresee it operating.
And typically, what what is sort of a a general temperature that that triggers that?
That's hard to say. I'm thinking for you folks, it's gonna be somewhere about twenty to twenty five degrees.
Okay.
But that's something we haven't vetted out. We did. We did model it out. I didn't go back and take a look at when that changes over. You know, it also has to do with whether it's sunny outside or not. I mean, it's not a hard number.
Yeah, if it drops to twenty five for, you know, but it's forty five and sunny during the day, then.
Yeah. So, you know, in this thermal mass of the building. So that's why we wouldn't want to like assign a number and say switch over here. Because I think we can squeeze the heat pumps for a little more heating season. If we wait till they they basically tell us they can't do this anymore.
But that's a great, great information. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If mass save came to my house, I'm gonna guess that before they would talk about any options, they would talk about air sealing and insulation as my first line of defense. Now, that was not part of your charge, but would that indeed be advisable to look at insulation and air sealing before we were to reinvest in this building on the magnitude that you laid out here?
So when it comes to insulation, it depends on how much your heating load is and it depends on how easy it is to add in insulation. In we would have to look into, you know, how much it would cost to add insulation and what the benefits would be. There would potentially be a benefit, but you know, whether it's completely, you know, cost effective in your particular situation, it would depend.
But I'm hearing you say it'd be prudent at least to consider it.
It would be good to consider it. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And that then would give you a new baseline for your existing. Because it'd be existing plus any changes in insulation or air ceiling.
Yeah, and you could even you could even do the installation work afterwards. But you would at least want to take that into consideration when you do your sizing of the of the heating cooling systems.
And again, your report it referenced three and a half inches of insulation in the walls perhaps. And an R factor on the ceiling.
Yep. Yeah. So there is insulation, you know, in the walls and the ceiling. So it's not, it's not a complete slam dunk because you get the complete slam dunk when there's no insulation in some places. But it still could benefit you.
How much remains to be seen. Okay, thank you.
I have another question. I know you mentioned that you're working with the town of Winchester. Are you finding that schools are like these are more town projects or school projects? Are schools making these conversions?
I'm I'm finding that in general, it's mostly municipal state.
Four point two million dollars.
And and other, I would say like quasi governmental entities like the MBTA, Massport, those types of entities are are looking at this strongly. You know, your higher end and your your Harvards and your Pfizer's, people like that are looking into this. Your commercial level companies, they can't afford it.
And so are you doing any work with schools right now? Do you have any schools you're doing work with?
Public schools.
Public schools, yeah.
Scott might have just lost connection. We are doing work with some schools now, yes. Similar studies like this we're doing at some other schools as well.
Implementations yet?
I'm not aware of any at schools, but Scott would be more familiar with that.
In terms of the the heat pump, are these technologies continuing to change? Can we assume that things will be either A superior or be more cost effective in in terms of competitive pressures in the industry?
My apologies, I lost my connection. Did Sam pick up for me?
He did.
Yeah, I wasn't sure about how much schools are actually being done in terms of installs right now, but I knew that we're doing some assessments at schools.
Yeah, the last two schools I've done have not done the installs. Not too many school systems have the budget for this kind of thing.
Thanks. Anyone else have any questions?
Just anticipated technology advancements around heat pump.
Sure, that's a great question.
Are you optimistic?
I am, especially for option number three. And and the reason is, is that the existing systems that we have were all designed to make cold water. So they're not optimized as a heat pump, for instance. With electrification and the strong push for it in New England specifically and and other colder climates. You know, they they're gonna need to change out refrigerants and and the way they size equipment and and how efficient they make it. So I do see that coming. I've I'm seeing other manufacturers offer air to water heat pumps. We're still not seeing much past the hundred and thirty degree temperature range, which is kind of problematic. But you know, there's if you go to like carbon dioxide or other refrigerants, you can actually get up in the one eighty range, which would make a huge impact on the New England building stock. So yes, I do. I think in the next couple of years, we're gonna start seeing technologies that you can almost plug and play. Take a boiler out, put an air to water heat pump in. If you've got the electric service for it, it just, that's it, you're done.
That's that that hope, and it was only a hope. I needed I needed your answer was behind my question about the the life of those cast iron boilers now. You know, do we know we want to do something, but how imminent is it? Usually boilers give you some warning.
Yeah, again, I don't know the condition of your exist your existing boilers. I can't tell you cast island board, excuse me, cast iron boilers can last an awful long time. The two things that typically destroy cast iron boilers is is thermal shock. In other words, you return water that's too cold. Or a poor chemical treatment. If you have a currently have an aggressive hot water setback schedule, you could be decreasing the life of your existing boilers as we speak.
I didn't understand that, but I'm sure people on the call do. Okay.
It's cast iron. So you know, it's really hot with the flame on it. If you bring cold cold water back to it, the cast iron shatters.
I that part I understand. The the temperature differential, the the setback I didn't quite get, but forgive me for that. Okay.
All right, well, Sam.
I have a question, but it's really to our administration, not to our professionals or or consultants is that how does this EUI compare to our other schools? It seems very high. But Alcott.
We have some of those previous. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't wasn't sure who she was asking.
No, I just wanted to go back to the slide so you can see the numbers.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, it is. It it is high. Our elementary schools, I I think Thoreau and Alcott are the highest. Well, Sanborn and Peabody won't be there for long, hopefully when the bids come in. But the the high school and the middle school were designed to be efficient. So that's that's why they're significantly better. So this is kind of a way to improve the EUI. Another thing though is I I think the the conquered goal is more focused, not that EUI is not important, it is. But you know, there's been a stated goal to reduce carbon emissions. So the both two and three really significantly make progress on that. Option two and option three. And so I think the either way, we would make significant process on the progress on the EUI as well.
And then high school is about fifty, I think.
In that range, it might be a little bit higher, but you're in the ballpark.
And the did any of this study inform us about how we would approach Ripley? And that's just my question.
So that was not the the scope of their of their work. The Ripley work previously went out and had a design already developed to move to heat pumps in the pods. And so that work has been scoped out. And as part of that, there's an electrical upgrade, which is why that project cost is more significant than this project. Ripley is actually, I think, the most inefficient building we have. But again, because of the electrical upgrades that we need to at Ripley to accommodate the heat pumps, that's why that project cost is approximately a million two. Without the electrical upgrades, it's significantly less than that. I think it's about forty percent of the cost approximately.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you also to Sam and Scott. This has been extremely illuminating and we appreciate all the hard work that went into this. You guys clearly did an excellent job and it is very helpful to us as a deliberative body to look at four options here. So we appreciate that and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott. Good night to you both. All right, well, more to come on this. I'm glad we were able to to see that. So that we can look forward to the future, I guess, and see what see what holds. So next, we're gonna move into our budget discussion. I will just give a quick framing. We remain about a little less than a point and a half apart with the finance committee's recommendation for guideline. We had our hearing last week on Thursday where Dr. Hunter and Mr. Conroy presented our budget. The finance committee, due to the length really of the hearing itself, have punted their deliberation of the guideline to tomorrow evening. So we don't unfortunately have much to say on their sort of debate and process, but we'll have to have this discussion regardless of that. So I know some people on the committee have some remaining questions. I want I want to be able to get anything answered that remains outstanding in people's minds. That's the first order of business. And then, you know, I think this discussion can be free form. I I look forward to hearing everyone's perspectives and insights and, you know, really getting into into the work of looking at the budget. So with that, I will turn it over to members on our committee who have either opinions or questions to ask. Anyone? I got sixty minutes here.
I think one thing that the FinCon has spoken to are projections, not only this year's budget, but projections. And we've been long warned that fiscal twenty four would be tough and possibly fiscal twenty five tougher. Bob, I wonder if you could speak to the projected three percent. Bob, I wonder if you could speak to the projected three percent increases um and your level of confidence going forward that uh we could we could drop our increases. I I'm guessing that's predicated on a lot of things. Um, and I wonder if you could uh illuminate us further on that.
It is predicated on a a lot of things. Um, you know, the bulk of our costs are um it's about eighty percent of our costs are salaries. So uh you know, the contracts that we uh collectively bargain will affect the increases. Um, the um there there's also a kind of a year to year available variability of the number of retirements that we have, but over time that levels out, so you might have a bigger um increase one year and a smaller increase than another year, just based on the amount of staff that retires in a given year. Um, because the the cost of living plus the steps in lanes tends to be um significantly more than a kind of they say four percent, for example, and it's typically offset by retirements to come down to a more moderate number like, say, three percent. So the the level of retirements is a variable that's harder to predict. Um, another big um item that can swing and hopefully is a little bit more stable going forward is out of district tuitions. Um they are very difficult to predict. We'll see um swings. It's dependent on student needs that we um, you know, we're seeing students have some struggle, some students struggling right now still. I, you know, we're hopeful that inflation is starting to moderate. Um, some of our energy costs will moderate. Um, it it's it's kind of a dynamic environment right now, more so than the past few years. Um, so I'm a little bit uncomfortable looking out many years. I do feel like um, you know, we can focus on what we can control. And um, you know, what we forecast is our best guess. Um, in the short term, we have another variable, which is the homeless shelter in town. Um, there's discussion of grant funding for it. The current grant funding is not really sufficient to support um those students, and um there's a new bill that may uh significantly help um offset those costs. So there's there's a lot of factors. I know I'm probably not um directly answering your question. I guess what I'm what I'm saying is it is hard to predict out out beyond, I'd say even a year at this point. Um, there's I've seen so much change just in eight, nine months here that um it is hard to predict longer term. Um, and we have to make some estimates best we can based on uh trends we're seeing, but um
Let me let me.
But it is challenging.
Yeah, yeah, no, you you answered that nicely, and and we know there are unknowns here. Um would this school committee be better uh framing projections as best guess or as best case scenario that we strive for? Because I you know, I think it's so important that we're realistic with the FinCom. And I'm just curious how the the framing, you use best guess, but I'm wondering if it's really best case uh that would that that we're going to attempt to uh to arrive at. It may sound a little nuanced, but I think there is a difference.
Yeah, I I I don't I I I don't know that I was overly pessimistic in my projections, which would mean um or or overly optimistic. So I I I would say it would be more best guess than best case. Um.
All right, thank you. I'm I'm I I I don't want to make this too uh problematic for you. I know we're we're guessing about a future that uh we have have yet to encounter, but that is helpful. Thank you.
Can I? I I don't know, Bob, you might not have this, but Lori, you might. Our our projection last year for this year, can you remind us what um what we gave to the FinCom last year? I believe it was four point three percent. We're current, is that correct?
I don't have it right here in front of me, so I don't want to misspeak. We definitely had some discussion of it being a little bit higher.
Yeah.
So we don't know about it.
We had a pretty good estimate this year last year at four point three percent, and we've come in at four point seven. So I'm just thinking.
I know I I know I did project four point three this year before we did the budget.
Right.
I don't, I would have to look up last year.
And I guess in terms of projections, it might be worth noting that, you know, there's a lot of lobbying going on about special ed reimbursements from the state, and if any of that goes forward could be a positive impact on the coming years because we might get more circuit breaker um and some other things. So that's the really hard part about looking forward.
Uh, another one for me, I I shared all of my questions with with the chairs. But I I revisited a few now in the event I would uh need to share them with you, Bob. Could we see at some point a an updated table of circuit breaker with actuals? Uh, the actual inflows and outflows?
Yes, I have. I have a document of the revenue and carryover amount. Um, I can add the expense to it and be just roll forward. That's pretty straightforward. I could just add that to a report for the next meeting.
That'd be super helpful. Yeah, you've been very good about showing us uh the carryovers, but it'd be nice to see year over year what's coming our way from the state relative to uh what we've been able to do with it. Thank you.
I have I have most of that going back. I just need to add two years, and I'll have a five year history.
Okay. And then finally, Esser positions. Um, I know we've got about four billion dollars uh in the budget that's not in the town meeting warrant. Um, in terms of Esser positions, are those uh where are they in the budget right now?
Okay, yeah, just clarify. Did you say four million?
I believe so, yeah.
I thought you said four billion, Court. Maybe very hard. I heard four billion.
Oh, I didn't say four billion. No, I'm not. I'm not in Congress, no.
So we don't have either of those amounts. Uh, we have we have significantly less. Um so I can probably share my, so what um what was your direct question, actually?
Uh, Esther positions, where are they in our budget documents?
Let me see if I can share my screen now. I have a slide.
This is this is the place where Dr. Hunter's been very careful to uh uh try to forecast how we can put things in and take them out again if necessary.
Yeah, so this is the CPS S R three fund. Uh, Concord Carlisle didn't receive much at all. Uh, we're we're in the Concord Public Schools meeting anyways, right? So I won't talk about Carlisle. So this is a, this is um from the FinCom presentation, and so you can see at the top, the summer school was thoughtfully um done as a budget offset for summer school costs, and and it turns out that student needs were a little bit more than what they would typically be, so um, it was a combination of budget offset and expanded summer programs that the summer school went towards, and um in this coming summer, the program will be uh running kind of lined up with what we're budgeting, so there will be a little bit of budget relief left from that. Um, the literacy, PD and materials were one time costs, so that's something that will go away. Um they're being spent across FY twenty three and FY twenty four. More of that's being done in twenty three, but so that's again, those first two are not items that will be carried in the budget. Um, the bottom two um are spread across two years each, and those are currently in the Esser funds.
Bob, can I just speak to the adjustment counselor, and then you can talk on the other one? Because the goal is consolidate the adjustment counselors. It's going to be timed right very close to the new building opening, so Justin and I had that plan all along that uh this adjustment counselor never goes into the budget.
Because the consolidation will take place in a timely way.
Correct.
Yeah, nice. Okay.
I'll just let Bob talk on the sped.
And the language based special educators is for the language based program that was um at um the middle school, and this is a new position, um and it was part of the build out of our special education programs. It's actually the um amount in the grant is um a little bit more than the cost of the person we hired. Um, I should also add that those costs are a little bit overstated because we have to pay an MTRS contribution um when you're using staff on um on these types of grants. So um there will be a little bit of budget relief again because we're saving money on versus what we had planned for Esser. We'd have to, we'd have the ability to redistribute some of the savings to the summer school or potentially use some of that savings um at the ve- very beginning of FY twenty five, um if we're able to. Um, so that's the one position that we would carry forward um and need to roll into our budget after the Esser funds are complete.
Got it. Okay. Um, I I'm looking at the detailed budget that you gave us, uh, December sixth, I believe it was. That's our copy of of detail on the budget, and I'm curious about it, not to uh make your life difficult, but rather to uh come from the perspective that it's a school committee statutory responsibility to make uh a superintendent's recommendation, a school committee budget. Uh, because we're the ones that legally carry it forward, and that's the source of my interest. Uh, nothing more. Um in terms of the Esser funds, are those FTEs to be found in that budget document, or is it an independent uh um uh recording of those positions?
No, because the the line item budget, um you see, it's for general fund account, so those FTEs are not included in the line item budget.
Fine, that's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm. Okay, good. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Um, and then finally, I think I'm going to ask you to repeat yourself, and I apologize for that. Um, cherry sheet uh at CPS has no implications directly for us. It certainly does for the town, but it landed about where where we wanted it, uh because the town's going to use that to offset some of its CPS costs. Am I right? It came in about or a little bit lower than than you and the town had anticipated?
It was was pretty much in line with what I anticipated. It wasn't much of a bump at CPS. Um, we did get a little bump at the high school, however, um we're not talking about the high school, so scratch that. Um, yes, and I don't know what um the town had factored into their planning assumptions for the budget, but I don't think it ended up being um a a lot of help. Um, I don't think it necessarily would have would have hurt much, but not necessarily a lot of help.
I watched the public hearing when Carrie presented. She referenced it as flat, essentially, from what they budgeted to what it came up as.
Thank you, Lori. Okay. That's that's what I've got. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Court. Um, I'll move on to any other members who have questions, concerns, opinions, ideas. Is there anyone else out there?
I have an opinion. I don't know any questions.
Shocker.
I know. Um, would you want to do anyone else's questions first before?
I'm happy to move uh Carrie Cindy.
We've got a lot of questions, so I just want to make sure that we get all those covered.
Giving everyone the airtime that they need. Anyone? No? Carrie, I see you unmuted.
No, I don't have any question, any further questions. I've asked.
Okay. Questions. What about, okay, so Tracy, you wanted to make a comment?
Um, yeah, I want to make a comment, and I have an opinion. Um, I do feel as though this is a level service budget. I feel like I'm kind of saying the same thing over and over again. We have built out our special ed programs. We obviously want to keep our kids in district as much as they can, but we recognize that sometimes kids have to be out of district. We have those costs coming at us at fourteen percent, should that be the case. And I believe that, you know, we are providing the necessary services for what our kids need. We have counselors in place. We have mental health resources in place. You know, when we talk about projections, it's a little easier to do at a town level because you're talking about salaries, you're talking about roads, and yeah, there are little things that can vary up and down, but we're talking about people. We're talking about kids with needs, and their needs can vary from year to year. It's it's not stagnant. You know, I mean, we could have kids move into the district. We we are welcoming a bunch of kids into our district right now. And all of that does cost money, so I'm very comfortable with where we're at at the budget. I don't believe there's anything else in there that we can you know, cut, so to speak, and I I realize we're not a guideline, and I know that can be uncomfortable, but I am here to advocate what our kids need in this district, and I feel like this is a budget that provides level service for our kids in the district.
All right, thank you, Tracy. Um, anyone else looking to plead or round out this discussion before we move on? Everyone very comfortable with the data that's been presented and our ability to digest it and understand where we are? Yeah.
Alexa, can you just speak to what the process is from here? Like, where do we go from here?
Sure. So you know, I intend to um sit tomorrow evening in the finance committee's um deliberation on the the outstanding warrant articles that they weren't a um able to debate and um or deliberate about tomorrow night. So um I think really so much of the discussions that we might have moving forward would depend on the outcome of that meeting. That's my perspective. That's how I intend to sort of craft our agenda setting moving forward. Um, I think there are various different outcomes that 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 could come out of that meeting, and um I just, I want to be, I want to remain nimble. Um, dependent on what those are, and then you'll see um you know, the resultant um effects of what gets put on the agenda from there, if that makes sense. So I think we need to remain flexible.
So we would have this on the next agenda, following what FinCom talks about tomorrow, we would have another opportunity to talk about this as a committee?
I think I I think I think we're we're going to have to, yeah, absolutely, yes.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you, Bob. Thank you, Lori. Um, I appreciate um your attention to detail, and I know um um you guys have worked tirelessly on this, and and I appreciate um the due diligence that the committee's doing um as well. So with that, um, I after we've appointed um Angel Charles, uh, our new director of student services, um, that's created a domino effect, and now we need to create a search committee um for her replacement at the Thoreau School. So Dr. Hunter, if you want to talk about what that process entails and how we might um be of assistance in that um the capacity of that work.
Great, thanks. So we are anxious to post and get the search committee formed. Kristin's got this all sketched out as to the representatives we're looking for on the search committee. Um, we definitely need a school committee representative, so that's tonight's topic with you. From there, it'll include other stakeholders from Thoreau. Uh, they'll craft what a vision, we're going to have a staff and probably a parent forum to talk on visioning for the future, and then from there, work through who's going to be on the committee, form questions, um, screen resumes, and really run the process very similar to what we just did with the Director of Student Services. Um, it is high, high hiring season right now, so we're probably going to try to keep this on a fairly quick pace. The timeline Kristen shared with me has finalists named right before April break. Um, we 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 can't actually name anybody before April break and do a thorough job, but we can at least try to get the finalists secure, so people know in April where they stand, and hopefully um their level of interest in us keeps them viable candidates after the return of the vacation. So uh, it's a it's a moderate time commitment. There's a couple of meetings, usually on Zoom, Kristen hop in at any point, and then a day of interviews um to get to the finalists in April.
Can I ask a question? So um I should know this, I suppose. When does um Ms. Charles's um appointment sort of commence? When does her job title move, and when would this person be starting? If we have July first. Okay, so she will conclude her tenure.
She she is your Thoreau principal till the end of June.
Okay, thanks. Um.
And there's a, just to jump in on the schedule, if you're considering it, um, the full day, the really heavy lift, the full day of interviews is Wednesday, April twelfth. So um it's a Wednesday on purpose so that uh we expect quite a number of the Thoreau staff to be on the committee, so we wanted to make it one of the half days.
we expect quite a number of the Thoreau staff to be on the committee. So we wanted to make it one of the half days. But that's the, that's the big lift. I expect we'll be working together that day from eight to three. And then before that, there's three, three, three one-hour meetings on Zoom. Thanks.
And I just have to say, Kristen runs an excellent committee. It was super fun. I won't give away any of her secrets, but I won't. It was really, you know, it was really a diverse group of, of people in the room, which was great. And it just, if you haven't done one of these larger searches before, I definitely would recommend you volunteer for that.
Carrie. I, I would love to be considered for this. I'd be, I'd be really proud to be on the, on the search committee for the Thoreau principal.
We thought you might be interested.
You're the obvious choice, but I suppose you're, as a parent and someone thoroughly involved in that community, that I would consider your nomination. Is there anyone else who has any interest?
Do we need to vote? Can you simply give her the nod, Alexa?
I'm sorry, Court.
Is a vote required or can I?
I don't know. I, I don't think so.
CPS chair, just give Carrie the nod.
I'm gonna nod.
Fine, yeah.
Give a big nod.
It was highly contested. You might want to vote, but that doesn't look like it's the case. So.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie, for that. And good luck to you both or to all of you who will eventually sit on that committee. I know that we're in good hands. I too have sat on a hiring committee actually for Bob. And it is a rewarding process and I think it's one that Kristen runs quite well. So.
Question for Kristen. How do you anticipate Metco being represented on the search committee?
We haven't filled out the whole search committee yet.
All right. I, I would put in a recommendation that we see that we have some form of Metco representation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have no action items this evening since we did not have to vote for Ms. Rankin's appointment to the Thoreau Search Committee. So I appreciate you all. And I would move to adjourn. I guess, do we have to move? I guess we'll move. We've been doing it all night.
Because we're on Zoom, I guess.
We have to.
Yep, yep. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And I say aye, Anderson. Aye.
Llorano, aye.
Rainya.
Rankin, aye.
All right. Thank you all so very much. And till next time.
Thank you.